That concludes our discussion of these independent articles. I'll reach to our lottery for our next cohort of articles. The next article that we're going to consider is Advanced Life Support, Article 15. Article 15, as most of you know, is an article around advanced life support services. It can be found on page 45 of the warrant report. It was a warrant article that was offered by the Fire Chief and the Board of Selectmen. We do not have a positive motion from the Warrant Committee. We are going to get a positive motion from the Board of Selectmen, but before we do that, we thought that this, there might be a need for some definitional clarification on this issue, maybe a little bit of education about some of the basics. There was a handout rate that had been distributed, so hopefully you do have this handout. And I'm going to ask Assistant Town Administrator Christine Trier-Wyler just to kind of just go through this handout a little bit, to give us a little bit of an overview, if she would.
Thank you. I just want to provide you with a very brief overview. I know some of you who are here to speak on the article are well-versed in the terms and definitions. We've been using them interchangeably, but I think if you refer to the sheet during the discussion, it would be very helpful. If you don't have it, I believe there are some additional ones outside that they can give to you as well. I just want to give you a timeline of how we got here. Essentially, there are two levels of ambulance service that a town can provide, and that is basic life support and advanced life support. The town of Medfield currently has eight full-time firefighter EMTs, and we provide a basic level of support. If we feel the need for an ALS call, whether by dispatch or the EMTs on scene, we've always called an intercept service. That is an ambulance that will meet our ambulance either en route to the hospital or at the scene. That was in the past provided by hospitals such as Natick, Norwood, Framingham. That service was stopped by the hospitals when other towns started to provide ALS in-house. Once they stopped doing that, we went to private companies, and for the past 10 years, we used Events EMS, which was a private ALS intercept company. Abruptly this fall, they announced with three days' notice that they would no longer continue that service for us. Chief Kingsbury and several other chiefs, including Millis and Medway, worked together to bring in Brewster Ambulance Service, which was another private intercept service. We signed a three-month trial contract with them, and after just a few weeks, they informed us they could no longer continue that service because it was not economically viable with their business plan. From this point, from that point forward to today, we've used municipal, I'm sorry, mutual aid, which is we rely on other towns such as Walpole and Westwood that have ALS service in-house. We've been relying on them to provide our ALS service. Mutual aid is not a long-term solution, and it's not a permanent solution for the town of Medfield. Tonight, you're going to hear about different options the Warrant Committee and the Board of Selectmen are going to propose regarding that. Both our EMS coordinator and the Fire Chief are here for technical questions and answers as well.
Do we have a motion from the Board of Selectmen?
Yes, we do. The Board of Selectmen moves that the town appropriate $500,000 for the purpose of providing advanced life support services, said sum to be raised on the fiscal '18 tax levy, and that the Board of Selectmen be authorized to expend said funds, provided that the appropriation authorized under this article be contingent upon approval of a so-called Proposition Two and a Half operating override in accordance with General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 21(c). And I have a report as well, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you.
And this is a report, generally, and I'll note where it's for the entire Board, generally for a majority of the Board that's made this motion, Selectmen, Murby, and myself. At the outset, we appreciate very much the proposal that Chief Kingsbury has made. We respect him tremendously and appreciate the efforts that the Chief and Lieutenant Panati have made, and we respect their expertise. All things being equal, we would be inclined to continue with our past intercept strategy because it has met the town's needs. In other words, we would not be having this discussion this year if the past intercept service were still available. And we acknowledge the Chief's view that that is no longer a viable option, and we respect the Chief's advice that other towns are not going to answer calls to assist on certain calls indefinitely, although we do find it difficult to believe that every town in the area is going to spend the kind of money being discussed here to acquire a capability that will only be used at a low level. But we have to recognize while we're here that this is an upgrade in service that we are talking about, from an intercept model that is no longer available to a call for the town to provide it directly. And aside from the importance of providing ALS-level service, the staffing decision too is a major decision for the town, with follow-on effects for a number of areas other than just the cost of this particular proposal. It has an impact on the future of the on-call fire department. If in the long term the town moves away from a call fire department, it likely will require another increase in the size of the fire department. And we are at a fork in the road on this issue between whether the town will go it alone on ALS or look for ways to combine resources with other towns in the area in a similar position. And we need to understand the impact of this decision on the long-term future of the fire department. The timing of this discussion is being driven by a change in the marketplace and the loss of intercept service. And there are two issues. First, providing ALS-level service to the town, and secondly, addressing the long-term staffing strategies for the fire department. Only one of these issues is of immediate emergency importance. And given that importance, we don't think that we as a town have fully explored every possible option. The Fire Chief has considered the options available to him, but we think there may be more choices out there which require the whole town government to be involved. But it does amount to sticking with the current model for as long as we can. The decision to hire is a 30-year decision, 30 years of salary, benefits, et cetera. Even if the year-one cost is as estimated, the inflation rate on employee salary and benefits has generally been higher than the prop two-and-a-half tax limits. It's clear that the market has changed, and so too has the work of the fire department. We respect the view of the Warrant Committee that this issue should be studied further with a committee to make further recommendations on a permanent solution for the provision of these services. And if the town meeting ends up opting for the Board of Selectmen's proposal or the Warrant Committee's view tonight, we have agreed to create a study committee with the charter that hopefully was handed out tonight, along with a resolution describing the position of the Board of Selectmen on this issue and the steps that we intend to take after town meeting. So regardless of what happens tonight, if one of those two views prevail, we will create this committee to report back at the end of the year. But the majority of the Board of Selectmen does not support dismissal of this article either. Based on the Chief's advice, it is possible that while the study committee is working, other towns will decide to cut us off and no longer send their paramedic ambulance to assist on Medfield ALS calls. And we think it is important that the town not experience a reduction in service as a result of the changes in the private marketplace. So that's why we proposed allocating $500,000, which will have to be voted on in an override to be held at the same time as the override vote on the Affordable Housing Trust override, and to be expended under the direction of the Selectmen while the study committee is working. We believe this amount of money will be adequate for the town to procure contracted private ALS services for even the better part of a year, should that turn out to be necessary. Our intention, however, is to avoid spending the money if we can. If the town meeting votes in favor and the override passes, the town will have expressed its view that it wants ALS services, at least equal to what we've had in the past in the coming year, and is willing to pay for those services. If other towns cut us off, the Board of Selectmen will have the funds and authorization to act pending the upgrade to obtain contract services. It gives the study committee time to report back. We also think, on the recommendation of the Warrant Committee, that one of the questions on the table will be regionalization. We think we will be in a better position to have discussions about regionalizing and talking to other towns if the funds have already been appropriated via an override and are available to be contributed to any potential regional solution. And one final note here, even if ultimately the best solution turns out to be providing this ourselves and direct, through direct hiring, we still don't think this is the right time to do it. We will be hiring a new Fire Chief within the next six months. We'd like to give the newly appointed Chief a chance to weigh in on this change. We also have no collective bargaining agreement with our firefighters. The agreement expires this summer, and we haven't negotiated a new one. So we don't know what the terms of employment are, and there's a number of issues and questions that people have raised around certifications and training and maintenance of skills that would have to be collectively bargained, and so we just don't have the answers to what, to those questions, because we don't have that agreement. And so we, again, we appreciate all the work so many people have put in on this, and the Board of Selectmen supports this motion we have made for the appropriation of $500,000.
Okay, and as I mentioned, we did not have a positive motion from the Warrant Committee after their consideration. They voted unanimously to seek dismissal, and we have an adverse report from Warrant Committee member Jack Wolfe.
Thank you, Scott. You have materials in hand that summarize many of the issues that are present around ALS, and I really invite you to look at the one from the Warrant Committee called the Warrant Committee's ALS Options Overview. It summarizes some of the wide range of options that the Warrant Committee considered, and we want to thank, as Mike did, all those who provided extensive and really highly-valued input on the subject of these many perspectives. The expect, investment, and service levels provided by each of the option has been the subject of lots of debate. They are noted as approximate, and they are fairly approximate. As we examined options, we arrived at agreement on the degree of uncertainty in each option. There is a lot to be considered here, and the more questions we asked, the more it became evident that this major decision requires more study, focus, and expertise than the Warrant Committee could provide in the recent four months. The intercept service that has provided ALS to Medfield for over a number of years has worked quite effectively. If our intercept service had not been discontinued, we would not be talking about Article 15 now. Today, we're relying on our neighbors to provide this support, and they're doing it very well, and it's certainly adequate for the intermediate term, but clearly not a long-term solution. And we, as the Warrant Committee, share the view that this is a serious issue that needs to be addressed, studied, and addressed quite soon. And personally, as I enter my 80th year with a triple bypass behind me seven or eight years ago, there are few people in the room that are more likely to get a large number of frequent flyer miles on ALS than am I. So I have a personal interest in ensuring that those are first-class frequent flyer miles. But with that said, let's recognize that we have a balance to consider. If we hire paramedics, there are at least three options for paramedics that could be pursued. If we contract ALS services out, we have a preliminary quote from one supplier only, not more, and there are more to be considered. Regionalization, as Mike noted, is an attractive option because there are towns in close proximity that are in similar situations to us, and we could consider combining with them with operations located here, operations located in another town, but regionalization could provide us with first-class service at a much more limited cost. Let's recognize that were we to hire paramedics today, the utilization of those paramedics would be under 20% for ALS services. So it would be very low utilization. That affects not just the cost issue, but it also affects the fact that they will become out of practice. They will not be using their skills on a regular basis, and thus, I think, less value to us. The Warrant Committee can identify about 10 options right now, and all of those options are worth considering and investigating before we can make a cogent ALS decision. Mike noted that Chief Kingsbury deserves exceptional thanks, and that was reflected in your applause in this room. He does. He is a terrific public service. But he is resigning, and a new chief will be coming in and making the selection and hiring and training of all the new people that are involved. So let me suggest that we, as a Warrant Committee, let me get the right page out, recognize the fact that this deserves careful and prompt study. The Warrant Committee, in conjunction with the Selectmen, has unanimously recommended formation of a study committee, and the Selectmen have clearly agreed. Our only difference with the Selectmen is the need for immediate funding. Thus, the Warrant Committee believes that we are not putting the town in any danger by not having funding. Our neighboring towns are good friends and will continue to supply us, and we recommend that Article 15 be dismissed at any amount, at any amount. And we further recommend, as noted by the Selectmen, the formation of a capable and responsive study committee to be done along the lines that they suggest, but that particular study committee requires no further town meeting action. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments from the stage here before we go to the floor? If not, we'll just take anybody who has questions or comments at microphone number one or two. Are there any questions or comments? Okay, well, if there are none, we will put this to a vote. This requires a simple majority vote to carry. We have a motion offered by Selectman Maracucci around the funding of this advanced life support services decision. So could you read the motion again one more time?
Move that the town appropriate $500,000 for the purpose of providing advanced life support services, said sum to be raised on the FY '18 tax levy, and that the Board of Selectmen be authorized to expend said funds, provided that the appropriation authorized under this article be contingent upon approval of a so-called Proposition Two and a Half operating override in accordance with General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 21(c).
Okay, that's our motion. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Show of hands, please. All in favor? Opposed? I'm going to deem that it does not carry by the required majority. Medfield State Hospital, the former Medfield State Hospital, Articles 18 and 19. Before we commence with the consideration of these articles, I'm going to ask Steve Nolan, who is the Chair of the Medfield State Hospital Master Planning Committee, to give us a little bit of an update of their activity and some coming attractions for the months ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Steve Nolan, 95 Main Street, I'm the Chair of the State Hospital Master Planning Committee. Give the latest of the hour, I'll dispense with my 17 pages with prepared remarks. I just wanted basically to make three points about our efforts to date. We were appointed by the Selectmen in June of 2014, following this town's purchase of the state hospital property. The committee was charged with preparing a master plan for the former MSH property, as well as nearby town properties, including Lot 3 on Ice House Road and the Hinckley property. The committee has undertaken extensive public engagement through surveys and conducted social media efforts and public meetings, including our meeting on February 7, through which almost 600 residents gave us feedback either at the meeting or after the meeting through completing our survey online. The survey results are now posted on our website, if you're interested in reading them. Our website's mshvision.net, so I urge you to look at that to familiarize yourself with the results of the survey. Second, our planning activities, we've been engaged in a lot of research over the past couple of years studying other large-scale redevelopment projects. We've done significant investigation and outreach, meeting with developers, meeting with others who have ideas about possible uses of the property. We've also worked with our consultants to prepare a robust financial model that measures the likely financial consequences to the town of various redevelopment scenarios. In preparation for the February meeting, the committee developed four survey concepts based on our accumulated learning. The concepts were intended to elicit feedback on a range of subjects, including the overall level of development, financial impacts, and desirability of particular uses. Thirdly, our future course. You've heard mentioned tonight that we're hoping for a town meeting in the fall, but in the nearer term, based on the feedback we've received to date, we're working with our consultants to narrow the development options to two scenarios and to develop more detail on those scenarios, and we're planning to have some further public input at a session on May 24. We had a handout at the door, hopefully you picked one up, which gives some of the details for that meeting. We urge you to attend. We have really been grateful for all the input the public has given us because we're really trying to work out a master plan that really responds to the needs of the community and the desires of the community. So after that meeting, we're hoping that a consensus will emerge, which will allow us to converge on a preferred option that we will develop in greater detail over the summer. We expect to conduct further outreach in the early fall with a goal of holding a special town meeting with respect to the master planning and potential disposition of portions of the property in the fall. We're entering a critical phase of planning over the next six months, so we urge you to continue to give us your input and to attend our sessions, and we hope you will approve the request for some additional funding for consultant works to get us through to the finish line. So thanks very much.
Okay, and thanks for the work of that committee. There is, the committee has a great newsletter, so this train has been coming down the track for a while, and now it's getting closer to the station. So if you haven't been paying close attention, I think now is the time to really begin, May 24, as a forum, the newsletter, and lots of other opportunities to be able to contribute your point of view to this big strategic issue for Medfield. So with that said, Article 18 is an article for the appropriation for maintenance and security at Medfield State Hospital, was offered by the Board of Selectmen. It's found on page 51 of the warrant report, and we have a motion from the Warrant Committee, from Warrant Committee member Jack Wolfe.
Thank you, Scott. Article 18, move that the town appropriate $100,000, said sum to be raised on the FY ' '18 tax levy for the purpose of providing ongoing maintenance and security at the site of the former state hospital.
Do you have a report, please?
We do. With great thanks to John Thompson and others, the MSH property has been secured and maintained well enough to allow frequent and safe recreational use by many in this room. These funds, largely for maintenance, but with some security content, will be provided to continue that good usage for another year as decisions are made about the long-term use of these properties. The Warrant Committee recommends passage.
Okay, any questions, comments regarding this article for the appropriation for the maintenance and security at Medfield State Hospital? Please step up to microphone number one or two. If there are no further comments or questions, then we'll put it to a vote. Requires just a simple majority. All in favor of the appropriation, please say aye. Opposed? I'll deem that it carries. Okay, Article 19 is to appropriate funds to hire consultants, engineers for the Medfield State Hospital, also offered by the Board of Selectmen, also found on page 51 of the warrant report, and we also have a motion from Warrant Committee member Jack Wolfe.
Move that the town appropriate $100,000, said sum to be raised on the FY '18 tax levy for the purpose of hiring consultants, engineers, and/or attorneys to assist the town with ongoing preparation of a master plan for reuse of the former hospital and surrounding areas, and to advise the town on matters concerning the site's disposition, reuse, and environmental remediation. Said funds to be expended under the direction of the Board of Selectmen, with the understanding that the Board of Selectmen may authorize any other town board, commission, committee, or department to expand a portion of said funds for such purposes.
And a report, please.
The Medfield State Hospital Master Planning Committee is actively pursuing alternatives as outlined clearly by Steve and his team, and will, this fall, arrive at a set of recommendations for our town. To all of us, this is a strategically important effort, and I think it deserves our continuing support. The Warrant Committee fully supports that. These funds will be largely used for consulting support as alternatives are evaluated, and some lesser amounts to complete needed legal and other support. The Warrant Committee looks forward to the Medfield State Hospital Master Planning Committee's recommendations in the fall, and it recommends passage.
Okay, are there any questions or comments, further comments on Article 19? If there are none, we'll put it to a vote. Requires a simple majority. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Rule that it carries. Do you have a comment? We just voted, I know. Say hello to Mr. Harney, see what he has to say tonight.
John Harney, 17 Maplewood Road. I rise not to oppose the $100,000. I mean, since 2003, we have spent $790,000 on consultants. This will add another $100,000 in the last, since we bought, or since the Board of Selectmen signed a memorandum of agreement with the state, we've already spent $500,000 on consultants. And you might ask, where are we? And what you just heard was that we have no definitive conclusion as to what is going to happen with that property. It's a magnificent property. Most, if not all, of you have been up there and seen it. The state has a budding open land on both sides. It's so remarkable, it astounds people who come upon it and say, we can't find anything like this around the world, a former state hospital in this condition, and it can be used for so many different opportunities. It probably, probably, and I think John Thompson would back me up on this, it probably can be cash positive going forward if used in the right way. Now, what we agree on, I think, as a town, is that some affordable housing will be put up there in fairness to the generations yet to use the property. We should not be making all of the decisions as to how all of that open space up there will be used, but we know we have to solve the many housing problems that have been addressed this evening and which will be continued to be addressed. In any case, unlike last year, I do not oppose this $100,000 going forward. We have a new consultant. The first consultant, as you probably know, did not work out well with the committee. There were indeed two consultants. One came on as an mediator of problems and has stayed on, and we have a second one, Kathleen McCabe, and her various assistance from different firms, engineering firms, et cetera. But the work is going forward, and frankly, the committee has admirable workers on it. When the ball was somewhat dropped by the first consultant, Pat Casey, Gil Rogers, and others on the committee stepped forward and did great detailed work, and they should be commended. My concern is for the Medfield community. How much housing is too much housing for a small town that only has a real estate owner's contribution by way of tax? I've watched Needham, Wellesley, Weston, other towns struggle to buy land because they felt threatened by housing, too much housing.
Okay, John.
We need to settle 40B. I understand, I'll be through in one second. We need to understand how much we can absorb and then come to some conclusion about how much is too much for the state hospital. All right, we'll see more of this in May at the hospital's meeting, we'll see hospital committee's meeting, we'll see it again in November, probably, if the schedule holds, which it may not, it hasn't in the past. But in any case, large, important decisions will come before a town meeting, and it will require rezoning, and we will have much to say at that point. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you. Wouldn't be a town meeting, right? Okay, here we go. Articles 13 and 14 are our budgets. So if we'll turn our attention to Article 13, we'll follow the same procedures that we have followed in the past. I'm going to begin by just reading down our list of budget items. I would ask that, if you would, that you just yell out a hold as I go by a budget item that you would like to reconsider. When we get to the end of having read through our budget items, we will vote all of those budget items that were not held. We'll go back and look at the budget items that were held, and we'll vote on those independently, and then we will go back again and vote on our entire budget. Our budget requires a two-thirds vote for passage, and I'll begin right now. We'll start on the top of page 34. Workers' Compensation Insurance, Health and Life Insurance, Liability Insurance, Unemployment Compensation, Medicare Insurance, County Retirement Contribution, Selectmen Salaries, Selectmen Operations. We have a hold on Selectmen Operations? So, okay, we have a hold on Selectmen Operations, line item 01-1222. Town Administration Salaries, Town Administrator Operations, Town Administrator Operations? We have a hold on Town Administration We have a hold on town administrator operations. Warrant committee operations. Town accountant salaries, town accountant operations. Assessors' salaries, assessors' operations. Treasurer-collector salaries, treasurer-collector operations. Town council operations. Human resource salaries, human resource operations. Information technology salaries, information technology operations. Town clerk and election registration salaries? That's Articles, a hold on 01-161-2, town clerk and election registration salaries. And the next one is town clerk and election registration operations? We have a hold on that. Conservation commission salaries, conservation, conservation commission operations. Planning salaries, planning operations. Zoning and appeals operations. TN public buildings and property maintenance salaries. TN public buildings and property maintenance operations. Town report and meeting salaries. Town report and meeting operations. Police administration and public safety building operations. Police operations salaries, police operations operations. Traffic markings, signs, and operations. Fire and rescue administrative salaries. Fire and rescue administrative operations. Fire and rescue operations salaries. Fire and rescue operations operations. Inspection salaries, inspections operations. Sealer salary, sealer operations. Animal control salary, animal control operation. Tree care salaries, tree care operations. Highway salaries, highway operations. Snow and ice salary, snow and ice operations. Street lighting operations. Equipment repair and maintenance salaries, equipment repair and maintenance operations. Sidewalk operations. Public works and utilities operations. Solid waste disposal salaries, solid waste disposal operations. Cemetery salaries, cemetery operations. Health operations. Public health and nurse operations, mental health nurse operations. Council on agent personnel, council on agent operations. Veteran salaries, got a, hold on, 01-543-1, veterans salaries. Veterans operations. Outreach salaries, outreach operations. Library salaries, library operations. Parking recreation salaries, parking recreation operations. Historical commission operations, grave marker, flags operations. Memorial Day and Veterans Day operations. Arts Cultural Council, stabilization, and the Reserve Fund. Town debt principal, town debt interest. Regional vocational school operations. School personnel, school administrative operations. Water salaries, water operations. Water reserve fund. Sewer salaries, sewer operations. Sewer reserve fund. So, we are, we have a hold on selectmen operations, town administrator operations, town clerk and election registration salaries, town clerk and election registration operations. And we have one more hold, veteran salaries. Okay, so we're gonna vote the, all of the other line items that are found in our proposed town budget for the next fiscal year. Requires a two-thirds vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so those line items have carried. Now we'll go back and we'll look at the, the individual line items that, there was a request to hold. We'll begin. Mrs. Harney, at microphone number one, if you would, on selectmen operations.
Mary Harney, 17 Maplewood Road. You can do them both together. I just want to know what's, why such a large increase in these operations? From, from 2016, 17, to the warrant committee's recommended numbers? What are we doing?
The money is being used to hire a 40B consultant.
Both lines?
Just the $40,000.
Just the $40,000.
Just the $40,000.
It's $48,325 for the selectmen and $41,300 for the town administrator.
We're just addressing the selectmen at this point.
Great.
That was just for the selectmen's line.
Selectmen's 40B consultant.
If you recall, last year, we had started a facilities budget, and so we moved a lot of the expenses from the town administrator's budget to the new facilities budget. I believe we called it Town Hall and Public Facilities. This year, we hired an actual facilities manager, who when he looked at how we tried to set the budget up, explained to me that you wouldn't normally put electricity expenses or copier expenses in your public facilities budget. Would strictly be facilities, not the actual operations of those buildings. So I'm moving the electricity, copiers, and utilities and heat back into the town administrator's budget.
Okay. Hard to keep track.
I would move, then, that we approve line item 01-122-2, selectmen operations as printed in the warrant. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All opposed? Deem that that carries by the two-thirds required. I would move that we appropriate funds for 01-123-2, town administrator operations as printed in the warrant report. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Deem that carries by the required two-thirds. We go to line item 01-161-1, and this is regarding town clerk and elections, registration salaries, and operations, and the warrant committee wanted to be heard.
Yes, I put a hold on this line item and the following one. The town clerk budget is estimated based, among other things, on the number and type of elections to be held in a fiscal year. A few weeks ago, State Senator James Timmeltie announced that he is resigning from the State Senate to become Norfolk County Treasurer. I don't think Senator Timmeltie is here, right? We want to thank him for his service. But as a result, there will be additional primary and final elections held in FY18. So there's an additional $6,134 in salary, and also in the, the second line item, another $5,332, for a total incremental amount of $11,466 to accommodate these two additional elections. So we need to increase the budget to, to fund that.
Any questions or comments on the proposed budget increase associated with the special election to elect a state senator?
Yes.
If there are none, we will put this to a vote, both 01-161-1. On that one, the proposed increase was? Okay, and let's put that one to a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Deem it carries by the two-thirds required. 01-161-2, the increase would be?
$5,332.
Questions, comments? If there are none, we'll put that to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'll deem that carries by the two-thirds that are required. That takes us over to a final hold on line item 01-543-1, having to do with veteran salaries.
I'd like to make a motion that the veteran salaries be changed to $51,831. My name is Ron Griffin. I am the veteran service officer.
So are we talking about the, the recommendation is?
The recommendation was $50,700.
Okay, so the recommendation was $50,700, and your proposal would be to amend what was offered in the warrant report?
Oh, I apologize. The, the recommendation was $27,660.
$860, yeah, correct. Okay. And, so do you want to speak to that?
Yes. First, I'd like to have town council talk to the state's requirement for a veteran service officer, and whether or not the town is in compliance with state law.
There is a statute that regulates that. I'm not prepared to discuss the particulars of it, and whether or not the town is in compliance at this point in time. There are requirements in that statute.
Yes, the requirement is that the town hire a full-time veteran service officer. The town has issued a notice by the state of some five years ago. Perhaps Mike Sullivan would like to talk to that?
Sure. The way the state law reads, if you have more than 12,000 residents, you are required to have a full-time veteran service agent. Medfield in the 2000 census had 12,024. So, under that definition, we would be required to have a full-time agent. We have been trying to bring that up gradually, to get it up to a full-time salary. We put a big bump in this year, but in term, when we were reviewing the budgets, trying to eliminate the operating override for the operating budgets, that was one of the cuts we made. We increased it by $2,000 over the current year's salary, rather than the figure that you proposed, the 15, it was in the warrant report. So, we're trying to bring it up gradually, the work to reflect the, the state requirement, but the workload right now is, is, we feel it's an adequate salary, given the workload.
But the town is not in compliance with state law?
We're probably not in compliance with a lot of state laws. But yes.
So, a positive vote on this motion would allow the town to hire a full-time veteran service officer. There are only a handful of towns in Massachusetts that do not comply with the federal law, with the state law. Medfield is just one of the very few. Other towns have found a way to find a solution for this. It doesn't always have to be a full-time veteran service officer. In some towns, it's a district that is formed, and where towns share the veteran service officer. In some towns, they, it doesn't require that, that be, the veteran service officer have the sole duty. You know, he could have other duties, or she could have other duties as well. So if a positive vote on this would allow the town to hire a full-time veteran service officer, and would place him in compliance with state, state law.
Okay, well, thank you then. I'm gonna restate, then, the proposition from microphone number two, would be that the motion would change, amend what is written in the warrant at $27,860, and raise that amount to $51,831. And, so we'll put that to a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, I'm gonna deem that it does not pass. Okay, so that is our operating budget. I'm gonna do a little calculation.
You still have to pass that one line.
I'm sorry.
You still have to pass the line with the main amount that was in it.
Yeah, okay, thank you. So we'll now vote to pass by two-thirds vote the original line item that was there for 01-543 veteran salaries. All in favor, as printed in the warrant, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And I'll deem that it carries by the two-thirds that is required. Do a little calculation over here. While we're doing that calculation, just want to thank the Medfield Foundation for once again supplying us water. Hope you support this organization. Again, to Aditi, thank you for all your work over the years. Thank you very much. Medfield TV has done a great job with the town meeting. Much appreciated, thank you. We've got Chris Allen out there on sound, you know, year over year, and it's a great, great service to us in between traveling around the country to do MLS and World Cup soccer. We get him back on the first, I mean, the last Monday in April. We're very grateful for that, and thank you, Chris. And I want to thank all of our school operations and the custodial staff. Do a great job in helping us prepare and get this gym ready over the spring break every year, and, and set up a nice opportunity for us to be able to meet together as a town for this dialogue. So, thank you to town, to school operations and the custodial staff. Thank you to you, for giving me a quorum right away, and for being very engaged as we go through a lot of this town business. Thank you. Random poll. We've always started, at least as long as I've been in town, starting these meetings at 7:30 at night. How many people would prefer 7 o'clock? All in favor, say it, starting the town meeting at 7 o'clock?
Aye.
All right. Okay, all opposed? There you go, there you go. Okay, for whatever that's worth, but, we do have a, we do have a charter and bylaw committee, and they may be entertaining that. I've been hearing that a lot from, from folks, so. Also improves our chances of getting it done in one night if we don't change the other end of it that requires me to get it finished by 11:15. We'll just draw it up, our, our final calculations for our budget for next fiscal year, so we'll be with you in one second. Our next item, if you want to look ahead, will be Article 14, which will be our capital budget. Can be found on page 43 of the warrant report. We're gonna have, it was offered by our capital budget committee, and we'll be getting a, a motion and a report from the warrant committee. Why don't we do it? We're gonna hold that, we'll come back to the, to the vote. Okay, here it is. We move that the sum of $60,470,133 be expended to defray the operating expenses of the town for the fiscal year commencing on July 1, 2017, to be appropriated as set out in the warrant or as amended on the floor of this town meeting, and that to meet said appropriation, the following sums be raised on the fiscal '18 tax levy and/or be transferred from other available funds as follows. From cemetery perpetual care interest, $20,000. From the water enterprise fund, $1,942,715. From the sewer enterprise fund, $1,650,000. From the pension and reserve fund, $75,000. From free, free cash, no funds. From sewer betterment stabilization fund, $400,000. From the bond premium for Sawmill Brook, $1,042. From the bond premium of June 7th issue, $3,357. From the bond premium on Redgate Farm, $2,408. From the bond premium on the high school field renovation, $3,000. From the bond premium on the solar array, $3,683. From the use of school property revolving funds, $30,000. From the MWPAT Title V septic loan receipts, $4,100. From the Mass School Building Authority, BAN, initial reimbursement, $4,501. From the MSBA grant to offset our school debt, $1,183,535. The subtotal of all this other revenue constitutes $5,364,0086. On the, therefore, on the fiscal '18 tax levy, we would have raised $55,106,047 for a total appropriation for the town for the fiscal year, $60,470,133. So that's our proposed town budget. We're gonna put that to a vote. Takes a two-thirds vote to carry. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And I rule that the motion carries unanimously. Capital budgets. So do we have a motion from Barbara Gibbs?
We do. Move that the town appropriate $362,806 on the fiscal year '18 tax levy to fund the fiscal year '18 capital budget as set out in the warrant. Other sources of available funds include reallocated prior-year unexpended capital and parking rec, revolving funds.
And do you have a report?
I do. The capital budget and the warrant committee recommends spending in the following ways. For the facilities department, $18,000 for the town hall gazebo roof. And just on a note, as I was doing the clean, cleanup Medfield day on Saturday, there are holes all the way through. You can see clearly up to the sky. $22,000 for the town hall roof repair. Roof repair system-wide for $40,000. District-wide HVAC plumbing for $55,000. For wheel off, a tile floor replacement for $30,000. And for district-wide facilities security for $20,000. For the fire department, no funds were recommended. For the town clerk, shelvings, no funds were recommended. For the library, repair of the main entrance portico, concrete, and brick base for $20,000. For the council on aging, repainting the outside trim and structures for $13,800. And re-sanding, sanding, and refinishing the large function hall floor for $7,000. Conservation commission land acquisition and management, $5,000. A cruiser replacement for the police department for $47,700. For the public works department, a 2018 Mack CHU 613 tractor for the transfer station for $127,000. Resurface subdivisions for $30,000. For parking rec, the purchase of a 2016 Ford F250 for $30,123. And the purchase of a Little Wonder Vanguard leaf loader with trailer for $7,000. The warrant committee recommends, the warrant committee recommends approval, passage.
Okay, so, we have a question. I know you do have a question. Why don't you, if you could, step on to microphone one.
I'm Nancy Irwin. I live at 5 Woodfall Road, here in Medfield, and I wanted to put a hold on the public works. I'm not exactly sure how I should do this. I'm not exactly sure how I should do this.
Thank you. I think what we'll do is we will, you had, the item that you were concerned about was the public works item having to do with the utility compactor? That line item?
Yes.
Well, why don't we vote the rest of it? We'll come back and we'll vote on, we'll consider that. So, all in favor, this takes just a simple majority vote to approve the recommendations made by the motion from Barbara Gibbs for capital budget expenditures for the next fiscal year. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Okay, so those have passed, and why don't you, if you would, just tell the town about your consideration or your concern of...
Okay. Again, I'm Nancy Irwin. I live at Five Woodfall Road, and I'm very passionate about recycling. I think anybody who knows me would be able to say the same. I think that Medfield is a green community. I think that we encourage recycling. In fact, recycling, I believe, is mandatory here in Medfield. I am at the transfer station three times a week in my role as the supervisor of the swap area of the transfer station. Sometimes I'm known as the Grand Poobah of the swap at the transfer station. And while I am there, the three times a week, Wednesday, Friday, and Saturday, I look up and I see many, many cars coming in to the transfer station. And they are lined up to go mostly to recycling, to the single-stream recycling compactors, of which we currently have two. And sadly, I look up and I see that these cars are sometimes lined up as far back as the main street out there. And many people are very patient and wait their turn and then bring their recycling to the two compactors. Some people are not so patient, and they decide to bypass the longer line and go into the shorter line and take their recycling over to the trash area, which is on the tip floor. I'm very saddened by this because I'm passionate about recycling, because it's mandatory here in Medfield. So, I guess what I would like to propose is a third compactor. So, I believe it's officially called the Marathon RJ325, a three-yard stationary compactor. I think that we currently recycle, I think, about 110... I'm not sure about the numbers now, 110,000 tons?
No, it's about between 1,000 and 1,100 tons a year we recycle.
Thank you. I guess I believe that if we increased the number of compactors that we had in Medfield to three from the two that we have, we would be able to therefore recycle 50% more. I think the cost of this recycling compactor is $22,000. I do think that it's possible to recoup this money, conservatively speaking, in one to two years. So, I would like to propose that we do this.
Okay, let me do this. Do we have a comment from the capital? We have a capital budget planning committee. Anybody want to speak to that from that committee, Barbara? Did you, the capital budget committee did not?
The capital budget committee did not recommend spending this money. We asked the Public Works Department to prioritize the things that they needed the money spent on, and we spent, we allocated it in that way.
Okay, I do understand that. I was under the impression that we had a grant for one of these compactors, and we would have to apply for this grant, I think, by June of this year. Is that... Can somebody back me up on that? Barbara, Mike?
I think it's my understanding there's a $7,000 grant for the compactor. I'd think that while the DPW director, who's new and unfortunately couldn't be here, is at the Snow and Ice Conference in Nebraska... Hopefully, it's not snowing there. I think he recognizes there's an issue with the compactor, but he just started a few months ago, and I believe he was going to try and address it operations-wise to make sure that those compactors did not get full again, similar to the scenario you're describing. So, he was not going to put the $7,000 towards this this year.
So, it's possible to save the grant for next year?
That I can't speak to. I'd have to go back and look at the grant agreement. I'm not sure.
Okay. I guess I was under the impression it had to be done this year.
We're going to need to put this to a vote. If you had a motion to restore the capital budget request, would that be your motion?
I guess my request would be, yes, to spend the $22,000 this year.
Okay, and which was not recommended by the warrant committee, but we will put that to a vote. So, to, first, we'll put this as an amendment to a vote, then we'll go back and we'll look at it. In favor of spending the $22,000 for the trash compactor this year, please say aye. Opposed? I deem that it does not carry. Okay, the last set of articles is articles in zoning and planning. These are Articles Numbers 39 through 47. And we have the Planning Board here, Wright and the rest of the team. Thank you very much. They will speak to each of these articles. These next nine articles all require a two-thirds vote. They also require a comment from the floor from Mr. Dickinson or members of the Planning Board. Why doesn't the Planning Board introduce themselves real quickly before we dive into these articles?
I, Wright Dickinson, Chairman of the Planning Board, 52 Harding Street.
Paul McCackney, 5 Miller Street.
Sarah Lemke, 33 Phillips Street.
George Lester, 28 Hartford Street.
Teresa James, 67 Harding Street.
Greg Sullivan, Associate Member, 122 Green Street.
Okay, well, thank you. So, we're going to begin with Article Number 39. Article 39, found on page 83 of the report, is an article to amend the zoning bylaws to designate Planning Board as a special permit granting authority. It was offered by the Planning Board, and we have a motion from the warrant committee. Warrant Committee Member Sharon Tetro.
Move that the town amend the Medfield Town Code, Chapter 300, Zoning Attachment 1, Table of Use Regulations, by adding the following symbol and definition: use which may be permitted in the district by a special permit from the Planning Board in accordance with appropriate bylaws.
And a report?
Yeah, we do have a report.
Yeah. Wright, go ahead.
Sure. Pursuant to the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 5, as amended, the Medfield Planning Board held a series of public hearings on December 19th, January 9th, February 13th, February 27th, and March 6th to consider amending the zoning bylaws set out in Article 39. The public hearing was duly posted and advertised in the Medfield Press on December 2nd and 9th in 2016. Mr. Moderator, this procedure was followed for Articles 39 through 45. So, I'm not going to, if it's okay, I don't want to repeat it every time.
Thank you.
So, this proposed amendment really is pretty simple. It creates a new symbol in the table of use so that the Planning Board may be identified as a special permit granting authority. The Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend passage of Article 39. This is one of a series of zoning articles taken together, put some, give us the Planning Board some more tools to manage any growth that's coming into the RU zone, which is really the residential urban zone that wraps around the center of our downtown area. So, we've seen a lot of pressure of growth. We've heard that tonight on other articles, you know, developers, 40Bs and all that coming in. So, this really works in concert with all the other things that we've been talking about tonight and have already voted on.
Okay, if there's any questions for the Planning Board, please step up to microphone number two. Or any comments, we'll try to move through this sequence of articles then fairly quickly. Okay, and we do have a report now from the warrant committee. Sharon?
The warrant committee voted unanimously in favor of recommending approval of the warrants 39 through 47 related to zoning bylaw changes affecting the RU Neighborhood District. The RU Neighborhood is located in the central part of Medfield, immediately surrounding the downtown business district on both sides of Main Street. This neighborhood is where you will find smaller homes on much smaller lots than you find in any of the other zoning neighborhoods districts in Medfield. The RU Neighborhood contains the majority of the town's older homes and remaining historic homes and properties. When you hear people talk about the unique character and feel of Medfield, it is this neighborhood that most people are referring to. This neighborhood of Medfield is a significant part of what makes Medfield the Mayberry of Massachusetts that people have sometimes called it. In recent years, development pressures put on the RU zoning district have included the conversion of single-family homes into two-family homes and the construction of multifamily housing by the joining of contiguous single-family lots into one new larger lot. These pressures have begun to increase the density in a neighborhood that is already much denser than the other zoning districts in Medfield. In response, the Medfield Planning Board and a number of Medfield residents, including those living in the RU District, have developed a series of proposed changes to the zoning bylaws to address these issues. These zoning changes are not meant to prohibit these uses in the RU District where they are presently allowed, but rather to better manage the development of these projects to help mitigate any negative impact they may have on the adjacent properties and the neighborhood as a whole. Warrant Articles 39 through 47 are designed to work together to control density in the RU Neighborhood and create guidelines and a review mechanism to encourage projects which not only benefit the property owner, but also are positive additions to the RU Neighborhood as a whole. One of the main mechanisms is to manage these projects in the creation of a special permit category that requires certain projects to be publicly reviewed by the Planning Board for adherence to a set of guidelines. It is during this public review that abudders and neighbors can voice their concerns, objections, or support for a particular project as it relates to the set of established guidelines. Presently, these types of projects do not require any public vetting as long as they meet a minimal set of requirements. It is through this public special permit process that each project is made available for all to see and to be reviewed by the Planning Board on its own merits. Each warrant article will be addressed individually, and in terms of Article 39, which creates a special permit category, the warrant committee recommends passage.
Any questions or comments regarding Article 39? If there are none, we'll put this to a vote. The motion is to amend the zoning bylaws to designate the Planning Board as special permit granting authority. It requires two-thirds to pass. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed? I deem that it passes by the two-thirds requirement. Article 40 is an article to amend the zoning bylaws to require a special permit from the Planning Board for the construction of new two-family dwellings or conversion of existing single-family dwellings into two-family dwellings over 15% of lot coverage. Found on page 84. You've been letting me say that all night. It's up right up over my shoulder as I just turned around and saw that. Page 84, offered by the Planning Board. And do we have a motion?
Move that the town amend the Medfield Town Code, Chapter 300, Zoning Attachment 1, Table of Use Regulations, by adding the sections in bold as set out in the warrant.
Okay.
Article 40 establishes a threshold of 15% lot coverage as the trigger for requiring projects generating two-family dwellings in the RU District to be reviewed under a special permit. Almost the entire RU District sits atop either the primary or the secondary aqua-fire zones that protect the town's drinking water, and for this reason, any project that has 15% lot coverage or greater is already required to come before the Planning Board to review the project's site drainage engineering design. These projects will now go through the special permit process as well. The warrant committee recommends passage.
And can I assume you're affirming and restating all of your comments from Article 39? All of the above? Any other additional comments? Any other questions? If there are none, we'll put the motion to a vote. All in favor of the motion on Article 40, please say aye. Opposed? I'll deem it carries by the two-thirds required. Article 41 is a zoning article to amend the zoning bylaws to reduce the maximum lot coverage allowance for new two-family dwellings and historic single-family dwelling conversions to two-family dwellings. Once again, offered by the Planning Board. And once again, Sharon Tetro has a motion.
Move that the town amend the Medfield Town Code, Chapter 300, Zoning Attachment 3, Table of Height and Bulk Regulations, by adding the sections in bold as set out in the warrant.
Okay, and any further comments from the Planning Board on this article?
Just that, you know, for two families, this is kind of unique that we're trying to promote and give some incentive for historic preservation when a two-family development comes in. So, they get a little bonus of percentage. So, a little larger home can be done if they try to maintain the historic value of an existing house. So, that's it.
A report, Sharon?
Article 41 modifies the lot coverage allowance for two-family dwellings in the RU District. The proposed lot coverage restriction will keep the lot coverage of any future two-family homes in line with the two-family homes that already exist in the neighborhood, thereby maintaining the character of the Medfield RU District. A slightly larger lot coverage will be allowed for qualifying historic properties as an incentive to preserve or maintain certain historic characteristics. The warrant committee recommends passage.
Any further questions on this article, on Article 41, or comments? If there are none, we will put the motion to a vote. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed? I'll deem it passes by the required two-thirds vote. Article 42 is an article to amend the zoning bylaws to define the procedures for obtaining a special permit from the Planning Board. Also offered by the Planning Board, page 87 of the warrant report. And once again, Sharon Tetro has a motion.
Move that the town amend the Medfield Town Code, Article 300, zoning, by adding a new section, 300-14.15, to create requirements for special permits by the Planning Board as set out in the warrant.
Any further comments? Restating, reaffirming the previous comments? Any questions from the floor? Any further comments? We have a question.
Paragraph D, the Planning Board shall, Laurel Scotty, 10 Green Street. The Planning Board shall adopt and from time to time amend rules relative to the issuance of special permits, and shall file a copy of said rules in the office of the Town Clerk. If we have rules, how many times are you going to change them from time to time? And what would the substance be of that change? I don't know the need for that paragraph. Right here, page 88.
Sarah's going to answer that.
I'll just lower. Sarah Lemke, in response to the question. So, the Planning Board's special permit criteria are directly lifted from the existing criteria that apply for the Zoning Board of Appeals now. So, that provision is already in the zoning ordinance as it applies to the zoning board. I think the idea behind it is that we don't want to come back and amend the zoning bylaw multiple times in the future, but this bylaw will be in effect for a long time. So, in the event the Planning Board finds that conditions have changed and that rules and regulations should be revised, we want to have the power to make those changes. I think it would require us to have a public meeting, notice of which would be given to members of the town if they wanted to come and hear the proposed changes. But we feel like this is an important tool to allow us to have this in place for a long time. And again, it is in the existing zoning ordinance as it applies to the zoning board.
So, any further report, Sharon?
Sure. Article 42 establishes the criteria the Planning Board will use to determine the appropriateness of two-family projects that have a lot coverage of 15% or greater and for all multifamily projects in the RU District to under review with the special permit process. The Planning Board and Medfield residents over many public meetings have established a set of guidelines. The warrant committee believes that these criteria are reasonable and necessary and will help in mitigating the impact of any new project on the neighborhood and all adjacent properties while preserving the ability for the property owner to develop the property to their own benefit. The warrant committee recommends passage.
If there's no further questions or discussions, there is a further question? Mr. Sorrell?
I'd just like to clarify the point it was made on rules. Those would relate to rules, procedural rules for how the hearing would be conducted, not substantive requirements of the bylaw itself, which would require an amendment of the bylaw.
Thank you for the clarification. Microphone number one.
Gerardero on Five Woodfall Road. I'm a little confused. We have these new special permits, and if I heard correctly, I may not have heard correctly, that this is literally lifted from the existing requirements to get a special permit. Did I hear that correctly? Oh, that one phrase, okay. Could we get a summary on this currently procedures for a special permit? How do these differ from the existing procedures? It's like what I'd like to know.
Okay, good question. Planning Board? Mr. Sorrell?
I'm going to let Mr. Sorrell take this one.
At present, there is no special permit required for the downtown. It's strictly limited to site plan review, so the Planning Board has had very little authority when a developer has come in with a project. So, this simply adopts a set of specific criteria related to development that a developer has to address, such as density, drainage... has to address, such as density, drainage, design, traffic, and safety. There's a whole list of them. They're the same special permit criteria, basically, that are required when a developer presently has to get a special permit in another circumstance.
Again, I'm a little confused. There's a special permit request now. How do these differ from the current? Is this just specifically for the residential urban area?
Yes.
Okay.
And particularly with the focus on multifamily housing projects.
Okay, so there was no special permit process for the residential urban prior to this time?
Correct. Simply a site plan.
Interesting.
Okay. Questions? Okay, that's, we have a motion on the floor on Article 42 to amend the zoning bylaw to define procedures for obtaining a special permit from the Planning Board. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Deem that it carries by the required two-thirds. Article 43 is an article to amend the zoning bylaw definitions to change definition of dwelling, comma, multifamily, and, Nick, do you have a motion for us?
Yes, yes, I do. Move that the town amend the Medfield Town Code, Chapter 30, joining Article 2 definitions by striking the existing definition of dwelling, multifamily, and replacing it in its entirety with the following definition of dwelling, multifamily, shown in bold in appropriate alphabetical order. So, the new, now it will say dwelling, multifamily, a residential development consisting of three or more dwelling units on one single continuous partial, not necessarily contained in one building.
Further comments from the Planning Board?
We're just not seeing apartment-type complex developments in town. It's more of the duplex and triplex kind of thing, so that's why we felt that this needed to be updated and changed.
Okay. A report?
This amendment changes the definition of multifamily dwellings from traditional apartment buildings to allow for a configuration of multiple, single, and duplex units that are more in character with Medfield's land use patterns. The warrant committee recommends passage.
Microphone number two, question?
My name's Nathan Bazinet from 30 Oriole Road. Just a few things stood out to me just to comment on with this article. It seems to allow but not require the use of these new smaller units, and it kind of smacks to me of mini sprawl on smaller lots, potentially. It also kind of brings to mind the fact that there might be an increase to the impervious lot coverage by having multiple buildings instead of a former one building on the lot. And you just spoke earlier a little bit about the water supply underneath the neighborhood, so I know that's addressed in some of the zoning bylaws and what have you, but it seems to increase that coverage potentially. And also, another concern is the merging of lots to create multifamily lots. I'd be concerned about a developer coming in and purchasing three Cape-style homes and then putting up a bunch of mini homes that are rented out instead of having single owners on their own lots. So, it doesn't seem to me like it's something that would necessarily keep the character of the neighborhood. It would change it and allow for builders to do more things instead of requiring what's there to be replaced. Thank you.
Good points, and we are addressing them. You're jumping ahead to some of the other articles we have yet to talk about here tonight, but trying to eliminate the sprawl of multifamilies. We're controlling that by lot coverage, and that speaks to the impervious surfaces. There's a whole tablet table to calculate that that we have in place, and our building inspector is enforcing that strongly. So, the size of the developments is restricted or controlled by that lot coverage so that we do exactly that, don't put too much impervious surfaces out there. And also, we have some changes to, in the Article 45, that also tries to speak towards keeping the density of these multifamilies a little more under control and trying to impede the concept of putting multiple lots together. So, that's exactly, exactly what we're trying to do here.
Right. I just don't think, I think it's kind of a solution in search of a problem in the sense that if you allow this, you have to create these other articles to kind of address it, so.
Yeah, no, they really all need to go together in order to solve the problems that you're putting together.
Right. Again, just a comment, and it speaks to me, so.
Okay, we have motion 40, a motion on Article 43 to amend zoning bylaw definitions to change definition of the dwelling or multifamily, requires a two-thirds vote, like the other motions. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'll deem it carries by the two-thirds required. Article 44 is to amend the zoning bylaw table of use of regulations to require a special permit for multiple family dwellings. Nick, you have a motion to offer?
Yes. Move that the town amend the Medfield Town Code, Chapter 300, Zoning Attachment 1, Table of Use Regulations, Section 1.4, by striking PB and replacing with SPPB, as shown in bold as set out in the warrant.
Any further comments?
We voted in.
Restating and reaffirming your previous comments.
Reaffirming.
Okay, a report?
Yes. The modification, this modification will require all proposed multifamily developments to be submitted to the Planning Board for review under the special permit process. These meetings will be open to the public for their comments on the merits of the project as they pertain to the established guidelines and requirements for multifamily housing set forth tonight. The warrant committee believes that this zoning change will create multifamily projects that are in keeping the size, with size and character of the town. The warrant committee recommends passage.
Questions? Comments on Article 45? If there are none, we'll put this to a vote. On the motion to amend the zoning bylaws to increase the dimensional requirements for multifamily dwellings, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Deem it carries by the required two-thirds. Oh, did I skip? I'm getting ahead of myself?
Yeah.
Wishful, exactly. Okay, so that was our article. Let's clarify that, just there's no issues. We're, we had the motion on the floor was to amend the zoning bylaw table of use regulations to require a special permit for multifamily dwellings. Correct? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Article 45 is an article that provides for an amendment to the zoning bylaws to increase the dimensional requirements for multifamily dwellings. All in, oh, yeah, all in favor, Nick? Do we have a motion?
Yes. Move that the town amend the Medfield Town Code, Chapter 300, Zoning Attachment 2, Table of Area Regulations by adding in the used column four-plus units and by striking the existing numbers shown in the area column and replacing them with numbers set out in the warrant.
Okay. Reaffirmed and restated on those. Questions or comments? Microphone number two.
Yes. Bill Hager, 78 Spring Street, Medfield. I attended a bunch of the Planning Board meetings, and I have to applaud, they were a hard-working group, put a lot of time and effort in, although I didn't agree with each and every of the decisions. I kind of, I'm up here now, I feel like I'm swimming against the tide after, after all the support you've been getting. But I do feel that in Article 45, the Planning Board has gone a little too far, and I have an amendment I would like to propose.
Okay.
I'd like to propose that 30,000, where it's listed there under area, square feet, be replaced with the number 24,000.
Okay, which is presently crossed off in the warrant?
Yes, that's right. That's what it is now.
Planning Board want to speak to that amendment? Proposed amendment?
Yeah. Bill was quite vocal in our meetings. We had a lot of back and forth. There were some really good comments that we added and incorporated into the zoning articles. There were many people that wanted more stringent controls than what we settled on. We really kind of negotiated back and forth to get them down to these two numbers. We had other controls that were in place as well, that we just nixed, just to kind of move things along and get something that would fit all. We also talked about, you know, there's talk about trying to create a zoning overlay for the 27 corridor where there are some larger lots in the RU district, but we felt strongly as a board not to go that route, to promote a special area, especially on the Route 27 corridor where we've seen other developments come forward that want to put a lot of density in. So, we feel that we definitely, not feel, we definitely toned down our numbers to get to this point, and feel strongly that if you take these numbers out of there and go any lower, you're really not going to have the desired effect on the rest of the RU zone, where a multifamily can go in in a much tighter area than where Bill and Deborah Miriam live.
rebuttal, Cardinal?
Yes. Well, that's what Wright is saying is precisely the point. We're talking about multifamily development, and multifamily obviously implies more density than one or two-family homes on a lot. I've lived at Spring Street for 45 years or more, and I like the area. I'd like to be there for another 45 years if possible, but I'm surrounded really by condominiums. There are two condo developments, multifamily developments, that have been there for 30 years or so, and you travel up and down Spring Street and you don't even really notice them. They've been there forever, they're, they blend in the landscape. They're not dense. They were approved under the current zoning bylaw, which is up for change. They're fine, they fit right into the area, and I think they're, they do a good job of housing people who need, who need places to live. There's another one, obviously, on Spring Street that people are aware of. It's been there five or six years, I guess. A much larger development, but again, that was put in on the what's, what the current, what the current zoning bylaw is, and it fit in there perfectly. Now, I was a little apprehensive when that came in. I'm thinking, God, we're gonna have 40-some-odd units, one lot removed from me. What's that gonna do to my property, to the neighborhood? Personally, did nothing. That place is so well-run, it's, in my opinion, very good-looking, fits in. I could hear a pin drop there. There's not an issue to be made coming out of that place, and that's what Planning Board is saying is too dense. And so, they're saying the same thing about the other two units on Spring Street, they're too dense. These are not too dense. This is an area of town that is conducive to multifamily development. We have the railroad tracks behind, we have Route 27 in front, and we're in the middle. If there's any place in town that we should be promoting more dense development and more multifamily development, it's in that area, but the Planning Board, you know, doesn't see, excuse me, doesn't see it that way.
Okay. I think we get your, I think we get your point there. Mr. Sorrell?
Well, there's more to it.
Strictly, procedurally, apparently, what Mr. Hager wants to do is leave the numbers as they are, so he doesn't need to make a motion to amend. He simply needs to speak in opposition to the proposed amendment from the Planning Board that would increase.
That's not, that's not what, that's not correct. I'm not proposing the numbers stay where they are. I propose that 30,000 be reduced to 24,000. 8,000 is, is there, and that was proposed by the Planning Board, and I'm, I'm happy with keeping that. The bottom line here is this, if you have an acre lot, and I'll call an acre lot 42,000 square feet, although it's not really defined in the, in the zoning bylaws. Currently, under the current bylaws, you can have six multifamily units in that 42,000 square foot lot. Under the Planning Board's proposal, that would be reduced to four units per acre. Under my proposal, the amendment I'm proposing, it would be a compromise of five units per acre. Now, what they're proposing is a 25% reduction in density. I don't see why that is necessary or where that comes from. There's just no need for it in that area, and I feel strongly that, I know that there were some on the Planning Board who I felt could see my point and see my argument, but for various reasons, they felt they couldn't go that direction. But I feel that the town meeting should look at this, and again, five units per acre is not excessive density. Even six units per acre fits in nicely where it is. So, I would propose that the, hopefully, the town will, will see my point and back my amendment.
Okay, well, we have an amendment to the motion to consider, is this on the amendment that you want to speak to?
Yes, it is. Oh, no, it's on the article, in favor of the article.
Okay, why don't we vote on the amendment, then? All in favor?
Well, I'd like to, may I speak to that? May I speak to the proposed change?
No, that's what I was asking.
Okay, excuse me. Good evening. Kit Viatour, 4 Curve Street. I actually can speak directly to that because I live immediately in that corridor, my house, butts the development that was just referenced, and I respectfully disagree that the, that the change would, that the density is, is just fine. I think that the article, Article 45, essentially would enhance the quality of the life for everyone in the, in the town, not just for the residents in the RU. I think that it is important to protect against the increased population density, to protect the historic buildings in town, and to mitigate, actually, to mitigate against the erosion of the value of our property. And for that reason, I support Article 45 as is, and I speak against the proposed modification to Article 45.
Thank you. Who else?
Cynthia Green, 44 Pleasant Street, on the Bylaw Review Committee, also in the working group that has been working on this since December of 2015. One thing to keep in mind is the minimum size of the lots for the different uses. 12,000 square feet for a single family, 20,000 square feet for a two-family. With this change, we move it to 30,000. Seems to me, if you keep it at 24,000, that's just double the size of what you could do for two families, but you're saying you can put three-family on 24,000. So, it makes sense to me that we would go to 30,000 here as is in Article 45.
Thank you.
So, I'm against this change.
Okay.
Jerry Pott, 7 Curve Street. I'm also in the RU district, and it's not just 27. Curve Street is, if you go down that, the double blind that you go over the railroad track. 11 Curve Street came on the market, and it's a two-and-a-half acre lot. I don't know if you, it's that little dilapidated house that I stuck my mom in, fixed it up and moved her in there, but we did that to stop, because when we talked to the Planning Board, they said that lot, that tiny lot by the railroad track could be developed into a two-family. So, it isn't just, you know, Route 27. The character of the town is changing, historic buildings are changing. The Planning Board, I just have to say, did a phenomenal job, probably in the years I've been here, one of the best jobs of reaching out consistently to the town and listening and trying to balance all the diverse needs. So, thank you for doing that, and I strongly support their recommendations.
Okay. Let me just comment here, so it's, this is my time check. 10:45 required time check by town charter. I'm gonna deem that we can finish this meeting in the next half an hour. We have one other set of articles having to do with commercial marijuana after we complete the zoning, so I'm gonna start limiting comments now, and we'll put the motion to a vote, but go ahead.
Jerry Kazander, 77 Granite Street. Just a quick question. How would this change affect our senior housing, our 40B? If we had two acres of land, we want to put senior housing on, are we restricted then the number of units we can put in there?
40B trumps local zoning.
Sorry, Matt?
40B trumps local zoning.
All right, but how about if we weren't doing 40B, we were just doing some senior housing, which we've been talking about? I'm on the committee.
It could be done as what's called a friendly 40B and still take advantage of it.
Okay, that's right. Thank you.
Okay, so we're voting now on the, the proposed amendment, which would take the 30,000 square foot area on page 92 and reduce that to the 24,000. So, that's the motion. All in favor of that amendment? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, I'm gonna deem that it does not carry. We go back. We go back to Article 45 to put that to a vote. All in favor of the article as it appears in the warrant, please say, or the motion as it was presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I deem that that carries. So we're on to Article 46. This is an article to amend the zoning bylaws to provide for inclusionary zoning, and I'll go back to Nick, if you would, for a motion.
Yes. Move that the town amend the Medfield Town Code, Article 300, zoning by adding Section 300 dash 14 dot 16, inclusionary zoning bylaw as set out in the warrant.
Further comments?
Yeah, the planning board has a report because the notice requirements were different for this one. So this applies to Articles 46, 47, 48, and 49. Pursuant to the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 5, as amended, the Medfield Planning Board held public hearings on February 27th and March 6th to consider amending the zoning bylaws set forth in Article 46. The public hearing was duly posted and advertised in the Medfield Press on February 10th and 17th, 2017. This proposed new section of the zoning bylaws would allow multifamily developments an affordability component so that each of the new development is responsible for adding new affordable units to the town subsidized housing inventory. The planning board voted unanimously to recommend passage of Article 46. I'll also just mention, because it came up before, this article does not work against the Affordable Housing Trust Fund article. The two programs could work together. This would be an article whereby a developer who proposes a multifamily development would have to provide affordable housing in its project at a rate in excess of the subsidized housing inventory requirement, so that with each new development that comes in, at least that project wouldn't put us further behind the 40B requirements.
Good. Just parenthetically, I just want to affirm that Article 45 passed by the two-thirds vote required. It's important for me to say that so that that can be recorded in that fashion, and thank you, Mr. Sorrell. We'll go back to Article 46 for a report.
Yes. For every new home or condo unit that is developed in town, we fall further behind in meeting the state's 10% affordable housing threshold. New multifamily projects have the greatest impact on putting us further behind in reaching our 10% goal. With this new section in the bylaws, we require any new multifamily project over five units to help the town in meeting our affordable housing goals. Rather than burdening the town further in achieving our goals, new multifamily housing projects will help us in attaining or maintaining our goal of 10%. The warrant committee recommends passage.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Article 46, if there are none, we'll put this to a vote, requires two-thirds. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Declare it passes by the two-thirds required. Article 47 is an article that amends the zoning bylaws, a table of height and bulk regulations to reduce maximum lot coverage for single-family homes, found on page 95, and also requires a two-thirds vote, and Nick also has the motion on this.
Sure. Move that the town amend the Medfield Town Code, Chapter 300, zoning attachment three table of height and bulk regulations by adding the language and numbers set out in the warrant.
Put in the planning board?
Yep. We put this one in front of the town to vote because we're dealing with two families, multifamilies, and we felt that we should have something in place for single families as well to try to put some control on it, tap the brakes a little bit. It's a small reduction that we're asking for in the lot coverage for single-family homes. There are tear downs that will still happen, and we just don't want to have humongous homes going up in their place that would do, have the same ill effects as some of these multifamily and two-family projects that we've seen.
Do we have a report?
Yes. This amendment is for the purpose of reducing the maximum lot coverage for single-family dwellings in the RU district from 35% to 30%. Presently, almost all of the existing single-family homes in the RU neighborhood do not exceed 30% lot coverage. The warrant committee recognizes not only the need to mitigate the impact of large two-family projects in the RU neighborhood, but also that a very large single-family house can have comparable negative impacts on the RU neighborhood. The warrant committee recommends passage.
Questions on this article or further comments? If there are none, we'll put it to a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'll deem that the motion on Article 47 passes by the required two-thirds. That's it. Thank you. No, no, that's it with the planning board. Okay, we have one more. This has to do with Articles 48 and 49, commercial marijuana. Article 48. Article 48 is an article to adopt a new general bylaw to prohibit recreational non-medical marijuana in all zoning districts. And this was offered by the Board of Selectmen, and we have a motion from Warrant Committee member Rob Sklof.
Article 48, move that the town amend the code of the town of Medfield, Division 1, bylaws part 2, general legislation, Chapter 175, marijuana and tetrahydrocannabinol by adding a new Section 175 dash 3 as set out in the warrant.
Okay, do you have a report?
Yes. This article does the same thing as the ballot question on the March 27th town election ballot. It would amend the general bylaws to completely prohibit all types of marijuana establishments in the town. Marijuana establishments do not fit into the character of our family-friendly town. As Medfield is one of the most highly densely populated towns in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts in terms of kids 18 years old and younger, making marijuana and marijuana-based goods more easily accessible is not desirable for our community.
Questions, comments? Okay. Microphone number two.
Hi, Eric Fugelstad, 14 Woodfall Road. I just think it's a little short-sighted for us to completely shut ourselves out of this potential gold rush where, you know, we have 95% of the budget is paid by homeowners. So that leaves 5%, you know, which comes out to about, what, $3 or $3 million? If we could get a facility like they have in Franklin, and Franklin is a pretty good town, pretty friendly town, they're actually safer than us statistically. They've had a grow house there for a couple of years, they're paying a lot of money, the town's benefiting, and the kids aren't really going to get in there. I think if people are concerned that the children are going to get hold of marijuana, it's the home-growing, people that are growing at home, there's a much more likelihood that kids are going to get hold of that marijuana. When there's a store that has 21 years old to enter, I don't see how they're going to get in there. And if you're afraid your kids from Medfield are going to go to the Medfield pot shop to try and buy underage, you probably never tried to buy beer when you're a kid. So I think that it's short-sighted. I think right now the tax rate is a little bit too low. It should be up, I should, closer to 10% for the town. I think it's at 3. But if we could potentially bank $300,000, $400,000 a year in tax revenue, just because some people are opposed to it, I don't want kids getting hold of it more than anybody else does, but it doesn't make any sense for us to shut ourselves out of it. How's a grow facility in a factory, in a warehouse, in the industrial section of town going to contribute to children getting it? Those places are locked down pretty tight as, that's the law. So I think it, we need as a community to say, yeah, it's not great, nobody wants to see kids smoking pot, but as a community, we could also make some money to help to offset educational things of that sort. So that's my opinion.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Microphone number one.
Jonathan Cakely, 40 South Street. I'm part of Medfield Cares About Prevention, which also includes Superintendent Marsden and Pete Peterson amongst others. I would make this argument: most of you that live in this town have made a significant investment to move here. This is just investment protection on your part. We're investing, we move here to Medfield to invest in our kids. Why would we allow something like this in? Every law teaches, the law catechizes, the law teaches what is valued and agreed upon, and it also teaches what is censored. And so for those reasons, I would say, let's keep it out of this environment. Let's keep it out of the space that our kids are in. Let's treat it like you would treat a porn shop in the old days. Nobody wanted those in their towns. They did everything they could to keep it away, and let's treat it the same way. Thank you.
Okay, let's put this article to a vote if we could. Article 48 is to, a motion to adopt a new general bylaws to prohibit recreational marijuana in all zoning districts. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
I'll deem it carries. Simple majority for that one. This one requires a two-thirds vote. This is Article 49, to amend the zoning bylaws to prohibit recreational non-medical marijuana in all zoning districts. And Rob, you also have a motion on this one.
Article 49, move that the town amend the code of the town of Medfield, Chapter 300, zoning attachment one, table of use regulations by adding a new Section 4.10B, non-medical marijuana establishments with the designation "no" in all zoning districts as set out in the warrant.
Do you have a report, please?
I do. This amendment is for the purpose of prohibiting the sale of recreational or non-medical marijuana products in all zoning districts in Medfield. The warrant committee recommends passage.
Thank you. Questions or comments on this Article 49? If there are none, we'll put it to a vote. It requires a two-thirds vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Deem it carries. Article 50. Article 50 is an article that authorized the Board of Assessors to use free cash to reduce the tax rate. And Warrant Committee Chairperson Martha Fester has a motion.
Move that the town authorize the Board of Assessors to use $1,092,000 from free cash in the Treasury for the reduction of the tax rate for the fiscal year 2018. Warrant committee recommends passage.
Any questions about the free cash article, the motion here made by Martha? If there aren't, we'll put it to a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Deem it passes. So we have just one more motion, and, but first, I just want to thank the warrant committee for a great job this year and a lot of work, and. Martha, great job. Thank you. And always to our executive branch and to all of you, the school committee and the planning board and everybody else, the hospital committee for a great job. The last motion is, I'll offer a motion to dissolve this year, the 2017 Annual Town Meeting. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. There we go.